Meeting to come to order. It's Tuesday, March 1st, 2016. It's a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. I want to welcome everybody here. We had a long marathon session during the study session and some of you know, I see the faces in here that were there earlier, so I'm hoping that this one won't be quite so long, but we're ready to take on whatever the issues are. Pro-Tam, do you have any introductions you'd like to make?
I'd love to introduce them all, but you know what? Respect for time, let's just move on.
Okay. We have our invocation today by Rabbi Adelie Plotkin from the Temple Beth Torah and a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Orr.
It's Adele, by the way. Honorable Mayor Ober, council members and staff, community members and friends. Once more, it is an honor to stand before you to pray that guiding wisdom will lead you to continued success in tackling the myriad strands of minutia you are constantly faced with. This includes, among others, of course, the issues of sanitation, safety, and respect you are dealing with today. We at Beethorah Congregation appreciate sensitive, welcoming, and inclusive atmospheres and pray that despite the changing faces, you will be able to be role models to all in offering the community such an inclusive atmosphere. We pray that you, our leaders, will be blessed with the understanding and creativity to successfully address the challenges before you. May you ever be mindful to protect with respect and compassion the people you serve and the environment we all live in, even when you are trying to control the disrespect some community members display to their neighborhoods, as included in the agenda today. For those of you who know me, you will easily understand why I particularly appreciate the additional airport safety measures you are taking today. May that concern for safety, as well as for respect, infuse all your interactions as you continue to formulate ways to address all the issues you need to tackle. In affirmation of these fervent prayers, let each of us now, in his or her own way, affirm, "So may it be." So may it be. Please join me in the pledge.
Roll call.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City manager, do you have any announcements?
No public announcements this evening, Mayor.
We have three presentations. The first one is from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council.
Evening, how are you?
I am well. My name is Neil Sneller and I'm the membership director for the Prescott Chamber. Our local chamber is proud to welcome the following new businesses to our membership: Arizona's Raptor Experience, At Home, Bangcroft Homes, Boy Scouts of America, Community Health Center of Yavapai, Conservatives for Stringer, Friends of the Public Library, Gallus Detox, Humboldt Mining District, Lakeview Plaza, Northern Arizona Social and Digital Marketing, Premier Travel, Prescott and Tennis Athletic Club, Prescott Dermolift, Prescott Pro Sound, Radio Station Calm, Shannon's Cheesecakes, The Cody Ann Team, Whole Foods of Prescott, Wright Wealth Management, and finally Zucker Architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second president.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Neil, are these re-ups or are they brand-new members?
Brand-new members. Now, some of these people might have let it lapse and come back into the fold, so.
Okay, and how many members do you have now?
About 860.
That's great.
Eight-hundred-and-sixty, that is.
All right, we're looking for a thousand.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next presentation is by the Prescott Area Shelter Services.
Hi, Mayor, city council, and the staff members. Thank you for letting us come and speak with you today. I know it's been a long afternoon for you, so we'll keep it pretty short. This is Lori with the Prescott Area Shelter Services. She is the president and the board of directors, and she's here to talk just briefly about what's been going on with PAS. But as maybe all of you might know, with any nonprofit organization, in order to be successful, we need money. It's the bottom line. So we can sit there and complain that we don't have enough money, or we can do something about it. The interesting thing is, the local newspaper has been writing since January about the homeless issue, those less fortunate in our community. And so a bunch of citizens got together and said, "I wonder what we can do. I wonder if we can go to the city, ask them for some money. Wonder if we can go to the federal government, see if we can get some money. Why don't we just figure out a way to do it ourselves?" And that's what we've done. Up on the screen, you'll see "Saddle Up: Arizona." That's a horse by the name of Tiki Barber. Anybody from back east? You know the football player? That's who he's named after. We're trying to get Tiki Barber here. He cost between $20,000 to $30,000 to come speak, so we told him we couldn't do that. But Tiki, he's going to try to do something that's never been done before, all in one season. He's going to go right up the Arizona Trail. Look at this map. Eight hundred miles, forty-three stops. It's going to take two and a half months, and we are all counting on Tiki to do it. You know why? Because we've got amazing sponsors in this community. Thank you, Steve. You know what I'm talking about. I twist your arm. So we've got some amazing sponsors. One hundred percent of the money from the sponsors goes to Prescott Area Shelter Services. But how else can we get this to make more money? How about getting the kids involved? All the schools, if you go to Kids Love Tiki on the far right-hand side there, kids are getting so excited about Tiki because they can follow him, because he's got his own blog. Remember Mr. Ed, the talking horse? We've updated him. He's got his own blog. So they're going to be able to follow him from Mexico all the way up to Utah. It's going to teach them about math, it's going to teach them about geography, and all of the schools are very excited about this in the region. So this is what we're doing to raise some money. A lot of the kids, they're raising one cent from their allowance for the eight hundred miles. Other people are pledging ten cents, five cents. Lori's doing a dollar, right, per mile? So we're raising money, we're very excited. The kickoff starts on Sunday, March 13th, at the Prescott Rodeo Grounds. I think we passed out a flyer for all of you. If you could come as our guests, we would absolutely love that. The director from the Arizona Trails Association, his name is Matt Nelson, he's out of Tucson, he's going to be here, he's going to be the speaker. It's just going to be a short little party. A lot of the schools and the kids are coming to get their pictures taken with Tiki for free, so we encourage you to come. Bring your families and your grandchildren, it's going to be fun. We're also going to have a celebration at the end of the ride, that's going to be June 25th, it's on a Saturday. Ed Box from the Yavapai Humane Society is opening up the Equine Center in Chino Valley in June. So we'll be celebrating Tiki coming home, we'll be celebrating the opening of the Equine Center. So basically, what we're trying to do on our own is take care of two-legged and four-legged friends. So that's what we're doing. We wanted to let you know about it. Lori's going to take a couple minutes just to tell you about the successes for PAS, the Prescott Area Shelter Services.
Hi. So I'd like to thank you all for your support, which you may not know, but through the community block grants through Prescott, we went from having the Prescott Women Shelter to also having a family shelter. And in the past, since we've started in 2007 and officially opened in 2009, we have served close to eighteen hundred women and many children, over three hundred this past year. So in addressing those needs that the newspaper brought out, we are working to do that, and we don't get state and federal grants. So the community block grant is the closest that we come, which is funneled through, and we get a United Way as our big grant. So this type of fundraising is really important to us in keeping the shelters open. So we thank you guys a lot for your support, both at a personal level and from the city perspective. So if you have any other questions, I gladly entertain them.
Any comments, questions? Where's Tiki?
Tiki lives out Williamson Valley Road, and he actually was invited to some presentations, but we knew that the cleanup was too much to bring him here.
And who is the young lady who's doing the riding?
Carol Fontana, and her husband is John Hughes, and she is a renowned concert pianist. And so she has many, many talents, and she's done the man against horse, and so some of you may have been, know her from there.
Well, I can't tell you how proud I am of you guys for going it on your own, for using this as a community gathering to support Prescott Area Shelter Services. And so for Carol and you both, I thank you so much, and can't wait till it's all over and we all celebrate.
Well, and hopefully across the state, we'll leverage some good points for Yavapai County for someone from here making it across the trail, which has never been done. So, yeah, bigger and better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Final presentation, be the Arizona Wildfire and Incident Management Academy.
Mr. Mayor, city council, good evening, first of all, and thank you very much for giving me a few minutes. Old mentor of mine used to say, "Be brief, be bright, and be gone," and I'll try to do that, okay? First of all, Arizona Wildfire Academy is going to kick off this coming Friday, the Fourth of March. We'll start moving into Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University, and we'll go through the 11th of March. At present, we have record numbers of students, seven-hundred-and-fifty students, about a hundred-and-fifty staff and instructors. So what does that mean? That means that to Prescott alone, over three thousand hotel nights, rooms in excess of $300,000 in bed tax that we can bring into the community. Another interesting statistic about the academy is we shop 100% local vendors. Everything we do is local. We dump all the money from that nonprofit. Our representation is about eighty percent of the state of Arizona, about twenty percent from outside. Historically, we see about twenty-five to thirty states representative, Australia, Canada come down and say hi. The Wildfire Academy, the Arizona Wildfire Incident Management Academy, is getting known as the premier academy in the country. We have a group coming in from Maui this year who work in all hazard. They deal with a lot of stuff. They're going to come in and shadow how our incident management team runs this, so when they go back to Maui, they'll be able to better understand how to run incident management teams. So a lot of exciting stuff. I'm not going to take your time, now you had a busy day, so what I'm going to tell you is come visit me. Thursday is an open house day. Mayor, if you'd like to come and speak to that crowd on any day, please let me know through your staff. We'll make an opportunity for you to address that crowd. Our biggest dopers are Monday through Thursday. A lot of exciting things going on, love to sit down, buy you lunch, and talk about how the academy has grown and continues to grow. Any questions?
Just a comment, Mayor. Thanks for all your, everything you do, and it's a great impact and it's a good feather in Prescott's hat.
Yeah, it's, you know, just a tremendous amount of giving from the local community. We do a pretty neat raffle. Another little statistic we'll throw out, part of our focus is volunteer fire departments who, guys swinging the hammer and finishing concrete for ten, fifteen bucks an hour. We have given out this year alone $32,000 worth of scholarships to those guys, so they go back and serve their communities. So it's the ultimate paying forward, because nobody who comes to my academy gets paid. They take vacation time, they volunteer to pay that ultimately forward, so it's really a cool nonprofit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate that. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item 1A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on February 16th, 2016. Item B, approval of city contract number 2016-177 for purchase and installation of Airbus Festa E911 telephone equipment for the Prescott Regional Communication Center from CenturyLink using state contract pricing in the amount of $19,533.98 general fund. Item 1C, approval of two applications to the governor's office of highway safety for grant funding. Item D, approval of sole source engine and transmission overalls for truck numbers 1335 and 1336 sideloading solid waste collection vehicles by Cummins Rocky Mountain in the total amount of $83,253.62, city contract number 2016-F164 solid waste fund. And item E, adoption of resolution number 4319-1528, approving change order number one to city contract number 2016-053, an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai County Flood Control District, reappropriating fiscal year 1516 funding for various drainage projects.
Thank you. There's no issues, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1E.
Second. Do you have a motion, a second vote, please?
Passed unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to number two.
Item two, liquor license consent agenda. Mayor and council, on today's liquor license consent agenda, there are four applications for a Series 15 special event liquor license. Item A, Yavapai Trails Association Beer and Gear Benefit. Item B, Yavapai Trails Association Whiskey Basin Trails Run. Item C, Yavapai County Mounted Sheriff's Posse 2016 May Roping Event. And item D, Sister City Association of Prescott Cinco de Mayo Fiesta. These applications have been reviewed and determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. Item B is on city property and did go through the city's special event committee where the event was approved. That's the consent of the liquor license consent agenda, and if you have any questions, answer them.
If there are no questions or issues, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to, move to, no, I'm sorry, got to back up here. Move to approve liquor license applications 2A through 2D.
Second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to regular agenda, for item.
Item 3A, approval of one amendment, number one to authorization of services, number nine, to dibble engineering in the amount of $2,417, city contract number 2014-029A9A1. And two, amendment number two to said authorization of services, number nine, in an amount not to exceed $55,000, city contract number 2014-029A9A2, associated with construction of the PRC Electrical Improvements and Visual AIDS Project at Prescott Municipal Airport, FAA ADOT and general fund.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of council. My name is John Cox with the airport. Yeah, these are two authorization, I'm sorry, two amendments to an existing authorization of service for a project that the city council approved, as well as the grant funding in August of 2015. This project has been going on since then, and I'd like to report that staff has been very pleased with the progress of this project and the cooperative nature between both the construction administrator, the owner, the FAA ADOT, and of course, the contractor. Amendment number one is actually an authorization, an existing authorization of services, number nine, in the amount of $2,417 for some additional design and construction administration services. The FAA identified a minor signage issue in the summertime after the design phase was complete, and they requested that the city consider adding this project to this contract. So basically, the $2,417 is for professional services for the design and the construction administration for Taxiway Charlie III, which is a signage project with some associated lighting, which is, by the way, it compares to this project as far as comparative analysis is concerned. The result of this inspection, again, just identified that this needed to be addressed, and the FAA requested that. So that's the first authorization of services amendment. The second one is actually in an amount not to exceed $55,000. This is really for additional construction administration services in protection of the city. The contractor has decided to expedite their construction work project, and they are working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The original construction administration was working some nights per the schedule and working some days in the essence of safety. Now, in order to have this project completed by the end of March, the contractor has decided to expedite their construction phase, and they're proceeding as per schedule. The $55,000 is for construction administrative services. It's the same authorization of services, number nine, to dibble engineering in order to complete this project on schedule at the end of March. This is really a highly complex project, if you will. There's a lot of subsurface components here. If we were to personify the airport, we're really giving the airport a new heart, if you will, and a whole new circulatory system with this electric upgrade and putting in a new generator with all new step-down transformers for this. So the original FAA grant was three and a half million dollars. The local share, which was two and a half percent of that, is around $88,000, as well as the state's grant contribution for $88,000. The actual city's share, if you will, for the amendment number one of the $2,471 of construction administration services is $61.78. As indicated, the cost of amendment number two will be recovered from the construction contractor. I'm available to answer any questions at this time.
Councilwoman Lizelle.
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me start, John, by saying I've been hearing a lot of good things about the way you run the airport out there, nothing but, I mean, I've talked to probably half a dozen, you know, more people that just have given you great kudos on how you run the airport out there, so.
Team effort, thank you, sir.
I have two questions. One, is the electrical engineer, did we hire the rural electric, or did dibble hire rural electric?
The electrical contractor was actually procured through public procurement, so we went through a bid phase. The city had procured under a five-year indefinite delivery, if you will, for dibble engineering to provide engineering services, as well as bid phase services, which they did under the design phase of this project. We did go out to, the city did go out to public bid, and rural was the lowest qualified bidder for this project.
Okay. I just have on this, because dibble put this memo out, and there's a couple things I just wanted to get an explanation for. It said, it went into, trying to find it, "In order to complete the project, originally the prime contractor has chosen to modify his operations in the area to increase productivity." Didn't they anticipate this, or, why are we picking up the extra $55,000? Did they just not see the complexities in it, or did something change?
I believe so, from the contractor. There may have been some strategies upfront with personnel and resources, but, you know, at this time, they're certainly picking up their efforts when they're operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including the nights.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Didn't you just say that the contractor is picking up the $55,000? I'm curious, in the fact, are we picking up $55,000 up as a city, or is the contractor?
Let me respond to that if I could. As indicated in the staff report and other materials with respect to the progress, or lack of progress, on this particular project, as the airport manager alluded to at the beginning of the project, for whatever reason, the contractor's progress was insufficient. In order to meet the contract completion date and not incur liquidated damages for exceeding that contract completion date, the contractor opted to increase or accelerate their work, which involves day and night shifts. That is not the responsibility of the city or other grant-funding parties to pay. The cause of that was the lack of progress. To make up that progress, any additional costs which are incurred, we will act to recover those from the contract.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the public?
Are we giving them $55,000 to recover?
Come on down, come on down to the mic and identify yourself, please.
I listened to that, does that mean that you're?
Please identify yourself.
Jim Lundey, Trend Research and Management.
Ask the questions of me.
Oh, yes, sir. Are we going to be paying the $55,000 now to recover it and recover it later? Is that what I heard?
That's correct, right?
That's correct.
Oh, good, thank you.
Any other public comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve amendment number one to authorization of services, number nine, to dibble engineering in the amount of $2,417, city contract number 2014-029A9A1. And amendment number two to said authorization of services, number nine, in the amount not to exceed $55,000, city contract number 2014-029A9A2, associated with construction of the PRC Electrical Improvements and Visual AIDS Project at Prescott Municipal Airport.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a question.
Okay.
You know, I'm sitting here listening to this, and I'm trying to get my arms around the fact that, Mr. Attorney, now that we are stepping up as a city to basically bail out the electrical contractor, what recourse do we have to make sure that we are able to do that? And at what cost is it going to cost the city to file a suit or gain that money back?
Well, the, you remember, the payment, the $55,000 amendment is to the engineer for construction oversight. So in other words, because of the additional night shifts or weekend work, we have to have somebody from dibble out there, and that's the increase in the cost. The issue is, in a claim under the contract, whether the contractor, rural, or its subs, which subcontractors, was in breach of their performance duties under the contract, and if so, then the city may have, you know, may have the ability to claim damages against rural for that breach of performance, which resulted in an additional cost to the city. The reality of it is, is, you know, to the extent the city, if the $55,000 is covered by the grant, the city's sort of out-of-pocket cost is two and a half percent of that.
Right.
So it may, you know, whether we go forward on a claim in actuality, and I don't really like to talk about sort of claim strategy in public, but whether we go forward or not on that is sort of a strategic decision. If the council determines we should go forward on that, we'd handle it in the city attorney's office. And under contract, under law, you know, under contract claims law, if we do incur costs, if we go forward on a claim, and if we do incur costs, and if we're successful, then we can recover those costs even by using our office.
So with that being said, does this put a black mark on the electrical company's performance and any other jobs that might come out at the airport or any other place?
It's case-by-case. We don't, we don't really have, I mean, in theory, we have what's called a debarment process, where, you know, if somebody performs poorly, or commits fraud, or waste fraud and abuse, you know, we can debar that contractor from future work for the city for a certain period of time. We don't really, we don't execute on that concept. We usually just deal with bidders on a case-by-case. As you know, historically, we did it for a few contractors, deemed them non-responsible, and then that lasted for a few bids, and then they came back into the fold, so. You know, those are factors that are always considered in the bid process, but that's usually by either the public works department, or the airport, or whomever is the bidding agency or bidding department, to consider past performance, good or bad, of past contracts.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Do I have a second?
I seconded it.
Okay. Have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passed unanimously.
Yeah, item B.
Item 3B, approval of amendment number one to city contract number 2015-207A1 with rural electric for PRC Electrical Improvements and Visual AIDS at Prescott Municipal Airport in the amount of $11,452.80 FAA, ADOT, and Airport Fund.
Mayor, members of city council, this is the same.
Mayor, members of city council, this is the same project. This is the construction side of that that required an amendment, and I'm thankful to say this is amendment number one with rural electric for a $3.5 million project. This is basically to install some taxiway signage and that will become in compliance with federal standards, as with the rest of the electrical project upgrades. And again, this was identified by the FAA and ADOT and supported on the funding side for this. So, the $11,452 with the federal and the state share, the remainder of that, which is 2.5% of the local share, which has already been approved in the city council action of the $88,000 for the entire project, the local share is $286.32. Is there any questions that I may be able to answer?
Thank you, Mayor. John, I'm looking at the change order. So, in July, we approved the contract, and then they noticed, there was a notice on August 24th, and then the FAA gave approval on September 5th. So, if I understand this right, we approved the whole project, and then the FAA came in and found this after the fact.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anything from the public? Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve amendment number one in the city contract number 2015-207A1.
Second.
With rural electric for PRC electrical improvements and visual aids at Prescott Municipal Airport in the amount of $11,452.80.
Second. Okay, have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passed unanimously.
Yeah, item C.
Item 3C, adoption of ordinance number 4966-1504, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the Prescott Land Development Code, Article 10, Nonconformities, Chapter 10-2, Nonconforming Uses, Section 10-2-6, regarding cessation of nonconforming uses.
Mayor and council, this is an item that has gone before this council previously at a study session and has been discussed with prior councils as well. If this ordinance is adopted, let me back up a little bit, just so kind of lay the groundwork for it. Legal nonconforming use exists under zoning law. When there is a legal use in existence and the zoning of that property changes, and the use is no longer in conformance with the zoning, so that use can, as a matter of sort of state law and constitution and federal constitutional law, is allowed to remain in place as what's called a legal nonconforming use. There's a sort of public policy to do away with legal nonconforming uses, in other words, to bring the use into conformance with the current zoning code. The land development code currently provides that if a legal nonconforming use is abandoned, the operation ceases for one year, the use, that use is, creates what's called a rebuttable presumption that the property, or the property owner or property user intended to abandon the use, and therefore, the legal, the right to continue that legal nonconforming use stops. Rebuttable presumption is something that the property owner could come in and, in fact, rebut by showing that there was no intent to abandon the use. Historically, Prescott did have a six-month abandonment timeframe in the old zoning code. And when the land development code was adopted, and I forget what years, I don't see anybody from planning here. No, it was before that. Land development code was adopted, that went from six months to a year. What this ordinance does is, for residential zoned areas, reduce, takes that back to that six-month period. So, if there's a legal nonconforming use in a residential zone, and that use stops or ceases operation for six months, it creates a rebuttable presumption, and the city can then challenge the continued use of that after that use is stopped for six months. The property owner or the user can show, you know, has the opportunity, if it goes to sort of the litigation format.
Can you give us an example?
Well, the best example is actually a case out of Glendale. It was, and there was an adult use that was legal and conforming at one period, and then the underlying property zoning was changed. So, that adult use became a legal nonconforming use. The owner of that adult use decided, or did things that weren't necessarily legal as part of their adult use. In other words, they went beyond what the First Amendment allows. So, there were illegal activities going on there. There was a law enforcement raid, the owners went away to jail for a couple of years, and the use stopped. Then, when they came back out of jail, they tried to reopen the adult use, and the case went on to the Court of Appeals and said, no, you've abandoned that use. You did something or failed to do something that showed the intent to abandon. So, you know, if, the flip side of it is, if there's a legal nonconforming use and the building burns down, and the owner or operator makes efforts to rebuild the building and reuse it within that six-month period, doesn't have to complete the building, doesn't have to reopen the business, but has to make, take some steps, some, you know, evidence, some evidence of steps, that they're going to reestablish that use. That usually is enough to allow the legal nonconforming use to continue. The opposite of it is, is there's no motion, if there's no activity, if there's sort of an abandonment of that, then the use is presumed to have been abandoned, and the city can go in and try and stop that use from going on. You know, we talked about the community residences, if we have a lot of legal nonconforming community residences, if there's a lease in existence and that community residence goes away, under this scenario, and it's not used as community residence for six months, let's say it's rented to a regular single family, after that six months, that right to have that community residence in that particular location would go away. I mean, those are sort of, that's probably the most pertinent example. So, this is one of those, this is one of those things that came up, really in the context of talking about community residents, but there is an application for other uses. In commercial or non-residential areas, the one-year standard will remain in effect if this is adopted. So, other than that, I don't really have anything further. If there's any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions, comments? I think there's also a 30-day notice period. Can you explain that?
There is, there is a, yes, there is, the development, community development staff sends out a notice asking or indicating that their use is deemed to be abandoned, and the, after that, now, currently, the one-year period, in this case, would be a six-month period, within which time the owner or operator can come back and sort of show evidence, not just say, no, I want to use it, but actually come up with some evidence that they haven't abandoned the use. And again, if there's, if they've closed the operation and they're remodeling, do you have building permits? Do you have plans? Do you have something that shows that you have some active intent to continue to use that property, even though the actual use may stop, like I said, because of a fire or because of something beyond your control, or because they want to remodel or expand the building, or do something where they actually aren't operating? As long as there's some evidence, then generally speaking, the use would be able to be continued. Now, I'll qualify that by saying, if there's, if there's an intent to expand that legal nonconforming use, that's not allowed. And legal nonconforming use is usually confined to the space it's in, so oftentimes, you'll get cases where you either expand the size of the use, which isn't allowed, or the scope of the use. So, another case that went to the Court of Appeals was a commercial nursery that was a legal nonconforming use. They, the owner tried to convert it or to also open up a retail-type nursery, and the courts said, no, that's an expansion of the use. It creates increased traffic, increases people, certainly increases your business. So, those are the, the courts wouldn't allow that expansion of that use.
Congressman Jessica?
Yes. Is six months an established minimum, or is it an arbitrary figure?
Well, it's not arbitrary. I think there are many, many municipal zoning codes in the state have six months. Generally speaking, it's either six months or a year. I would say the majority of municipalities in Arizona have a six-month rule, and the remainder have a year. I don't think anybody has more than a year timeframe to, and again, it doesn't, it's not an automatic, it's that rebuttable presumption. So, the owner or user can come in and show that they haven't abandoned the use, if they have some sort of, if there's some activity going on, they can actually sort of objectively show that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
Jim Lundey, Trend Research and Management. I'm an investor, and I just recently came to Prescott, Arizona, and I was making a bid on a house, and I had planned on making some bids in some other places, and I grew up in the inner city, a red line zone, so I sometimes perceive and see things other people don't. So, I noticed something out of place, the house up the street, so I went around and started shooting the shizer with some of these people, and it turns out, they're drug addicts, and they're in rehab. But then I went, I was invited in, and next thing I know, they're all smoking pot, and I'm being offered black tar heroin, China White, meth, booger sugar. And I says, well, guys, you know, I really can't do that. My days in that stuff is way long past, and don't you guys think you're like, you know, you're supposed to be in rehab? Now, my question is, I heard about the rebuttal of this and nonconforming that, and I'm just trying to put it in plain, simple language. If I'm trying to buy a place, and somebody's in one of these rehab clinics, and they're doing illegal things, they should be busted out of there, or somehow, they're nonconforming because that's not, the zoning doesn't allow people to do drugs in a rehab clinic, right? Am I right? And is this going to handle this, or do I have to wait six months, or what's the deal here? I don't get the bottom line. It seems to really twist it, and I'm not unbranding it very well. Thank you very much.
City Attorney, you want to answer that question?
Well, this doesn't deal with that. I mean, to put it sort of just plainly, if, you know, the Fair Housing Act protects people in recovery with, but if there's controlled substances that are, in other words, you can't continue to use and be protected by the Fair Housing Act. So, if there is a sober living home or recovery home, or whatever, community residence, Fair Housing Act protects those folks, just as it would protect any other person with a disability or handicap. However, there's an express exception to Fair Housing Act. This is, you know, you're not protected if you're, if, a couple of things. One, if it's court-ordered, sort of probationary-type halfway house. And the other one is that if you're, if you're using, you know, controlled substances, illegal controlled substances, in other words, either illegal prescriptions or illegal drugs. It does, it's gray whether it protects someone who's in alcohol recovery who's drinking alcohol, but clearly, it doesn't protect those folks. So, that house would not have Fair Housing Act protection, so it's outside of the scope of the zoning code in terms of what our, what our zoning code deals with. It's really more of a law enforcement issue. If there's active drug use in a house, not a zoning issue. It doesn't really deal, it's not, if that house were raided and shut down, I guess the example would be, if that house were a legal nonconforming recovery home, but there were illegal drug activities going on, then, and it were raided and shut down, and that remained shut down for six months, then they would lose whatever status they had.
Well, that helps me, because I came to your, pardon me for interrupting, but I came to your city council meeting, I think back in October, and there's a big crowd here complaining about this, and it sounded to me like the police are handicapped and almost ineffective in shutting these places down due to HUD input and city worries. I know HUD brings in a lot of money, probably, and, you know, you start.
Well, if they're breaking the law, then there's nothing they can protect them if they're breaking the law.
Okay, fine. I read the newspaper. I thought this issue was to take and address that, but it looks like they're outside of the boundaries of this legal issue. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I just want to ask you one question. Have you checked with the city to see if that house is one of the ones that's registered with us?
Like I said, I'm an inner-city kid. I, I, yeah, no, I have not.
Okay.
So, but, the gentleman's over there, and there's other policemen I've talked to, and I can say without saying, and they can do what they do, okay?
All right. Thank you. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers, my name is Connie Can Tell Me. I've been active downtown for probably 10 years with, in the historic district, and I just have one question pertaining to the nonconforming. If we have, for an example, on Pleasant Street, a few years ago, we had a nursery, and it closed down, the owner died, the house went into probate, it sat there for two and a half years, empty, the heirs put it on the market, it's in a neighborhood, but the person that bought the house was able to reopen the nursery, even though the neighborhood group that I'm in, we've been trying to get, take the neighborhood back, and we've been trying to have, you know, the home sold as for neighbors, for families and things. But I was wondering, does the planning department have the authority to overrule this nonconforming thing? Can they, if this house was not used as a nursery for two and a half years, can the planning department overrule the nonconforming and say, yes, now you can use this as a nursery again, even though the neighbors did not want this use to be brought up again? And it has created a lot of traffic problems.
Not a tree nursery, but a kid's nursery.
A kid's nursery, sorry. Montessori. Yeah. So.
Well, Mayor and council, the, it's really not a matter of the plan, or the community development department overruling, it's usually a consultation with the legal department. In other words, if, if somebody's operating a daycare center, and I thought it was some sort of flower nursery, so I'm trying to think on Pleasant Street, where the heck's the nursery?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I live on that street, but anyway. If there's, if there's a daycare center in the, and it's, and it's, and it's was, it's not allowed in that particular zoning. It was allowed at one point, it's not allowed now, and the operator passes away, that's kind of the idea behind it. In other words, the six months allows that, the estate to then either reopen that use, or currently, the one year, allows the estate to either sell that property to another user or reopen the use, you know, as, for the, on the heirs doing it or whatever. If they don't do that, I think there's a good argument to be made that the use has been abandoned, especially if it's two and a half years after the use stops, and then two and a half years later, it reopens. I think there's a good argument, I don't know all the facts, but I think there's a good argument to be made, that that use had been abandoned, you know, at the one-year point under the current, under the current code. But, you know, without having all of the specifics about the zoning and what are allowed uses or not, I can't sort of address the specific case, but given those facts, there's a good argument that could have been made, that the use was abandoned.
Can I make a suggestion that, in the event that that happens again, that the neighborhood is asked, because we are the ones that, so let's say that there's a nonconforming use that, you know, fits into this realm, shouldn't the neighborhoods receive a letter that says, how do you feel about us letting this happen again? Because we had very strong feelings about it. It's impacted everything in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just have a question. Listening to the conversation, what is the rationale to have different time period for commercial, non-residential property than the period for residential property?
The planning concept is that, is that, well, Prescott zoning is what's called inclusive zoning. So, if you go from single-family residential to multifamily to business to commercial, they're inclusive of all the lower or all the lesser zoning. So, you can do commercial, I mean, you can do a residential use in a commercial zone, or you can do a multifamily in a business zone, so it's, as opposed to exclusive, where there are lines, where you can only do this here and do that there. And the concept, I think, the planning concept behind, behind making a distinction is that legal nonconforming uses in residential, particularly, single-family residential, tend to have a greater impact on the single-family residential versus, versus a nonconforming use in a commercial zone, which tends to have all other uses allowed. So, there are actually not that many in the commercial zone. I think the only ones would be some sort of industrial use in the commercial zone. But again, that's, that's a, you know, there's a, I guess, the concept is sort of a less impact, and I can't, I can't go to specific cases, and I'm sure there's always an exceptions to that rule, but the concept is that, is that uses that are no longer allowed in a residential zone generally have a greater impact on the residential zone if they still exist versus uses in, say, a commercial zone.
Mayor Potem?
Thanks. I want to digress just a little bit. I've been sitting here, allowing this to fester. I think I just heard somebody stand here in front of God and Country and say, one of my neighbors was using dope, a lot of dope. of my neighbors was using dope, a lot of dope. Cops didn't do anything." I've been complaining about code enforcement, a lot of different things for a while. First question was me, why didn't somebody call cops? You know, if you see somebody out there committing murder, I think you have an obligation to do something. You see somebody out there, I don't know, child molesting a kid, I think you have to, I think you have an obligation to do something. I don't think you can just ignore it. On the other hand, if something was done, if the police were notified, we got a problem over here at House X. Somebody's over there smoking a lot of dope and peddling black horse heroin or whatever the crap it was, and the cops ignored it, then we have a real problem. I'm just sharing it with you. It's on my mind. Whether it's conforming or non-conforming, I don't think anywhere in the city of Prescott we tolerate that kind of deal.
I concur with you fully, but please remember, I came to your city council meeting in October when they were discussing these problems with these houses. And I got a real wooly feeling that there was something really wrong with the fact that they couldn't take and handle this problem of over 200 and all. And I just, you know, I bumped into this place. And based on what I was seeing, and my background is inner city, my friend, and law is the law, but the lawmakers don't always do the law. So you might want to consider that too. And just the general confusion I saw here with regard to how to handle this and people like Mr. Noel Campbell going down to your state governing body and trying to get things resolved via just the rules and regulations and being kicked back, put a lot of doubt in my mind. So I want to really thank you for telling me something I really should have done. I just didn't have the backbone. And so, thank you very much and I hope that helps you some.
Thank you.
And be assured, I'll begin with Chief of Police tomorrow. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, Council members, thank you for listening to me. I'm a little fuzzy on this.
Identify yourself.
My, my name is Eric Jordan. I live here in Prescott at 544 Golden Hawk Drive. Behind me is a, a home with a structure on it and I'm wondering if this even fits this scenario. It is an eyesore to the neighborhood. It has been abandoned for the last several years, at least two years. And it's, it's a monstrosity in the neighborhood. It was constructed after we moved in. And I don't know how the abandonment of, of structures and how they impact the neighborhood fits into this scenario. If it doesn't at all, I'll just address it in another way. We've had no luck through code enforcement at all on this. As a matter of fact, code enforcement, two or three years ago, said, "I don't even know how this was approved." And they've been, they've just kind of tossed it aside. So we've lived with this monstrosity and hopefully I'll be able to sell my house one of these days.
So when you say it's abandoned, nobody's living there now?
No, there's somebody living in the house, but the, the structure outside, they started it and never finished it. It's like 30 feet high and 10 feet in diameter. It looks like a missile silo above the ground. And it's just, it's an incredible monstrosity. I have pictures of it here if anybody would like to see it. You can see it from, from the street below. People drive by and they go, "What is that?"
I know where that is.
I'll pass it around.
I've seen that and wondered.
That's my house.
Then I think we're done here.
So anyway, you said you have talked to code enforcement?
Several times.
Okay.
Over a period of the last five years.
Okay.
We have gone down and talked to them about it.
Well, this is another issue for Chief Bonahan, so I'll talk to him about that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just on the topic, this is a complete nutter coincidence, but I did just go down to the police department, if you want to have this, pass it around. On the issue of the police calls to the sober living homes, this is their current, they're 60% above where they were last year, just in the last 30 days. I think it's 52 or 62 calls just related. And I had gathered that for our neighborhood meeting, by the way, because we have such a problem in our area, just to dispel or dispense the information to the neighbors. But that is the actual call list from the Prescott Police Department, if you need it.
Mayor, that document and topic may be more suitable for the next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure it addresses the legal non-conforming use ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Given there's no further comments from the council, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4966-1504.
Second.
You have a motion, second, please vote.
Passed unanimously.
Item D, please.
Item 3D, adoption of ordinance number 4967-1505, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, affecting Prescott City Code Title VII, Health and Sanitation by adding a new chapter, 7-7 Disruptive Properties.
Mayor and Council, again, another follow-up ordinance to our prior discussions dealing, again, tool, sort of tools in the toolbox discussion with, with the council. This is a, this is a proposed amendment to Title VII, which is health and sanitation and deals with disruptive properties. When the issue, the problem that was presented or the concern that was presented to us in a number of meetings with staff and council members was that there are a number of residences, whether there are, whether there are community residences or residences where a bunch of college students live, that tend to be disruptive to the single-family neighborhood that they're in, whether it's noise, parking issues, loud music, fights, those kinds of things. So what we did in the legal department was looked around to see if anybody else had sort of similar problems, any other towns or cities, particularly in Arizona, had similar problems, and found that, that ordinances dealing with these types of problems tend to be from cities or towns that are college towns. And so what we looked at is a, a couple of different ordinances from across the country and in, and in Arizona, including Tempe, where they have a, where Tempe sort of has a, we mirrored this program after the, the Tempe program. What it deals with is, is, it deals with residential use, it's not residential zoning. So talking about if there's a residential use that's disruptive to the neighborhood, unreasonably disruptive to a neighborhood, it gives, it gives the neighbors and the police department another enforcement tool to help deal with, with that disruption. Examples of disruption, and it's not limited to these, are loud music, boisterous gatherings, excessive loud or unnecessary, unnecessary noises that are audible beyond the property line, altercations, fighting, disruptive conduct, illegal drug use or other similar activities within or outside any building located on the property. Again, we're talking about residential use. The process that this sets up is that a, if a neighbor calls and makes a disruptive activity complaint to the police department, that the police department will come and do their, their investigation and document their, the officer investigating will document his or her findings as to the property. If the property is then deemed a disruptive property because one or more of these activities are going on, a notice is sent to the owner of the property, not the tenants, not the, you know, not the, the property manager, but the actual owner of the property, that their property has been designated as, as a potentially disruptive property. Which then sort of puts the burden on the owner to sort of tamp down on these activities that are going on. Because if it's a one-time event and the owner can kind of deal with the tenants, then it's pretty much done. If the, if the police department has to go out at that same property again within 60 days or 120 days if, a third time or fourth time within, within 180 days or five or more within basically a year, there, there is a, there is a successive charge, a service fee that the police, the police department can charge for going out to the property to sort of quell the disturbance at the property. That fee is set out in a schedule. Again, it, it sort of mirrors Tempe, it's a little less, we don't char, we're not proposing to charge for the first call. But once the, the four, the second, third and fourth are $500, $1,000 and $1,500 per, per visit and it's a service fee, it's an extra service fee from the police department. And, and that is again, that, that, that'll, because there's a lot of work usually involved in dealing, it's not sort of a single event or a single crime that goes on. It's a lot of work involved in terms of having to deal with the owner and maybe the owner's property manager and the tenants and, and dealing with the neighbors. So that's the idea behind the service fee. If a property is, is deemed a disruptive property, it's also considered a public nuisance. Gives us, gives the legal department or the city a tool and toolbox because you can go to court, superior court, if something's deemed a public nuisance and get a court order to sort of enjoin or get an injunction against any further disruptive activity. And that has, that usually has a pretty strong effect, but that's generally on the, the tenants of the property or the, the user of the property, not necessarily the landlord. So that's where, if it's, if we stick, strictly rely on nuisance law, there's a hole in that because we can't, you can't go after the owner under, under straight nuisance law, but that does give us a tool. When, when, when we, we have the police service, special service fee implemented, it doesn't necessarily mean that the owner is obligated to, to pay that fee. There is a way to, to avoid or to get a fee waiver and that's to do a mitigation plan. The mitigation plan can include a number of different activities, up to and including eviction of the tenants, depending on what the lease says, any other kind of specific plan of action and timeline to, to deal with or to prevent future disruptive activities, getting, you know, turning in a copy of the lease so it lists all the tenants there, own, you know, getting the landlord to agree to only allow the tenants on the property and, and maybe, you know, and limit the number of visitors or guests because oftentimes if it's a party issue, it's not, it's not just the four or five or six people living in the house. I know we've met with a number of residents who, who had issues with Embry-Riddle students, not singling them out, but there were, you know, four, five or six students living in a house and they would have parties like college students do on weekends and they'd have 50, 60 kids, a bunch of cars, sort of parking issues and noise and those kinds of things, beer cans and all that. So this does give the police department a, a tool and, and to the extent that the property owner, and in this case, if there's a property manager that can come in with a mitigation plan, then the, then the fee can be waived. Because the whole idea is to, is to, is to get the situation under control, it's not to raise revenue, it's not to, it's not to be a revenue generator, but it is certainly intended, the fee is intended to get some sort of compliance. The other thing that this doesn't do, it doesn't limit the police department from charging other crimes. So if there is illegal drug use going on in the property, they can charge those separate crimes, if there's disorderly conduct, fighting, assault, those kinds of things. Those can be charged separately against the person committing that particular crime. It also doesn't prevent us from charging the landlord with, with continuing to operate a disruptive property under either a civil citation or even a criminal violation if it continues and we can't get any sort of mitigation going on or any control over the situation. So again, whether this is used frequently or not, sort of yet to be seen, but it, the whole intent is to have a tool in the toolbox so that if there are disruptive properties, whether they're group homes or community residences or college students, you know, living in a neighborhood, this is, this is another way that, you know, the police department and code enforcement and to some degree the fire department, if there are issues with, you know, fire hazards, it just gives them another tool and toolbox to help deal with that, those kinds of situations.
So how is somebody going to be notified that they have a violation? There's going to be a letter sent.
We send a letter, the notice goes to the owner and the, and the-
From county records.
Yeah, from, from the tax assessor's role.
Okay.
Now, and, and going back to our discussion earlier in the day on business licenses, we can also look at the business, if business licenses are in place, look at the business license of, say, a landlord who might have a number of different properties or a, a community residence that might, you know, operator that might have a number of different properties. So that's another sort of option to look at the, at the, you know, the emergency contact information that Mark Woodfill was talking about, you know, is the owner. But we would, we would primarily, we would default to the tax assessor's roles, which should generally show the owner of the property as long as they're updated. And if, if it comes back, I'm not the owner anymore, then we'll just, we'll have to sort of track that down.
Okay. One of the things I'm concerned about, I've talked to neighbors that have had issues with a home next to them and, you know, the police come out, sometimes the police, you know, don't even issue a citation, it sounds like they just do a warning. Some cases, code enforcement has come out and actually given them a letter. And they supposedly, you know, came within, into conformance, but then two weeks later they're doing it again. So, I mean, are we just going to continue to send letters and they conform and they-
Well, no, this, the, the, the tool here allows for if there's a second call of a disruptive property within 60 days of the first call, we can, we can charge that service, a special service fee, a $500 fee to the owner to, in it, either, and the, and the owner's response is one of two things, pay the fee, which becomes a, could become a lien, you know, on the property, or come in with a mitigation plan showing how you're going to deal with the disruption going forward. If it's a third call within, I think, 180 days, you know, the fee goes up. If it's a fourth call within, you know, a fourth or more, the fee goes up from, you know, 500 on the second call, 1,000 on the third and 1,500 on the fourth and every subsequent. So there is a sort of a hammer available to this. So where there's a one-time sort of event that gets out of hand and it's, and it's sort of dealt with, you know, everything's good, there's no fine, there's no fee, it's really just sort of a warning, "Hey, turn it down" or "Keep it down" or whatever. But if it's a, this is really dealing with sort of continuing disruptive properties that, that are sort of ongoing. And that's, and so the, the first letter goes out with the warning, second letter goes out with a warning and a, and a bill, basically, that we went out a second time, here's your $500 special service fee, we already gave you the one warning. And, and so it, it does sort of have a, have a hammer to it, you know, and then beyond that, we can prosecute for a violation of the code, continuing to have a disruptive property or for a nuisance. So there's that, or prosecute either civilly or criminally.
Okay. And this might be a question for Mark Woodfill. Have we set up, if this ordinance is approved, do we have the mechanism set up right now that police would notify you of occurrences? I mean, I'm not sure I'm seeing how this is going to work, that, you know, this doesn't just fall through the crack like a lot of things have done in the past, that, you know, we do have coordination on the staff to make sure this gets to you and, and, you know, we, if, if it requires a second or third violation and a fee, then that, you know, we're letting them know that they have a, a violation and-
Right, Mayor. Yes, we would coordinate with the police department if this passes. We do, we are due now and are working with them for their billing of like the false alarm things, those type of things. We'll work the procedure together and it'll go out as part of our general accounts receivable and they'll get a bill and then it'll fall through into the collection process or, you know, when they pay it, it'll show paid and we'll notify the police department.
Okay, thanks. Councilwoman Wilcox.
A question for John. Let's say hypothetically, I'm a lawyer who is hired to represent a recovery home business and they're fined and, or levy the special fee or whatever. And we've just enacted the business license ordinance. And I come in and argue, "Well, I'm a business, I'm not a, a residence." And it looks like this ordinance, this nuisance ordinance applies to residences. So what is it in this ordinance that would capture the recovery home businesses?
If you look at definitions, it's resident, it applies to residential property, which is land on which a residential building or buildings or mixed occupancy is located, residential buildings, including one family, multiple, and rooming houses or boarding houses, residential occupancies and buildings of mixed occupancy. So it does capture that, that group home or community residence because they're, they're, they are deemed a residential use under our zoning code. The fact, the, the, the business licensing is a licensing of the business that operates that. So, so, you know, there's a question of whether each of the homes has to post a license or the operator has to have a license for each of the, each of the homes. Sort of similar to a landlord. A landlord has to get a license because he's got a, he's got a residential rental business, but the, clearly you don't post the business license for each, in each of the rentals. So you're, you, the business license deals with sort of the business operation of it, but if the owner comes in and says- if the owner comes in and says, hey, I'm not a residential use, I'm strictly a business, great, you're, you're not allowed to be, you don't get Fair Housing Act protection, you're out of here. So, yeah, I think, I think it would, I think that's a sort of cutting, it cuts both ways, you know, to try and find that loophole, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I knew the answer, but I wanted to hear it from you.
Counselor Meloza.
Thank you, Mayor. John, just to clarify, so I'm going to give a scenario here with, you know, resident A gets a call at a party, it's loud music, nobody's cited. A month later, they go back, it's somebody, two guys fighting, they get arrested, but then that's catalogued as a disturbance at that residence. Not necessarily the guy with the loud music, it's, it's just the occurrence, not necessarily the person. So my point is, there's a rotating door and there's different occupants or different activities throughout the year. This, this has to do with the owner of the property and what he allows to happen on the property. Not necessarily, now, there's could be citing, there could be arrests, you know, people get fined for whatever they did before, but these occurrences happen on that residence or that, that property and the owner is responsible for that.
Well, I think the Mayor and Council, the, in that scenario or those two scenarios, if the officer goes in and simply makes an arrest because two people are fighting and then doesn't sort of use this tool to, to notice up the property owner that this is a disruptive property, and, and I think that, you know, I think it has to be, well, fighting or brawling, I mean, it depends on, on, you know, what occurs on the property. So the officer may, may choose in his discretion not to sort of use this disruptive property tool and it's simply an arrest for fighting, disorderly conduct, fighting or whatever, or illegal drug use, and the officer may or, may not choose to use this tool. I mean, part of it's going to be to, to sort of train the police department on if the Council approves this, hey, this is another tool that you guys need to be aware of and we need to develop some, some simple forms and things that you can write down if you deem this a disruptive property. And by the way, it doesn't, this doesn't require a complaint. This could be the officer's own observation. If he's in an area where there is a loud party going on in a residence, that officer can go in and, you know, do what he needs to do using this, even though there may not be technically any illegal activity going on. In other words, just because you have loud noise and, and if they're all over 21 and they're drinking, there's no illegal drug use, there's probably not a crime going on there. But that does, but that's where this comes in, is it could, it could still be deemed a disruptive property.
Thank you.
Counselor Shiskin.
Thank you. Who has the burden of proof to establish the nuisance?
Well, if, if a, if we deem a property a disruptive property and we go to, and we go to court to get an injunction to, for, for a nuisance, we would have the, the proof to show that it's a nuisance to the property. I mean, I'm sorry, it's a public nuisance, that the property is a public nuisance, the owner, so if we go in and, and, and ask a judge to, to declare this property a, just a, a public nuisance, the city would have the burden of proof to prove that and all that. But this would allow, this disruptive property designation would be one of the items of proof, you know, but we'd have to, we'd have to probably show all the underlying reasons, not probably, we would have to show all the underlying causes to why the property was deemed a disruptive property. So it, it really just sort of ties this designation into the option of going and going into the court, getting an injunction or getting a declaration that the property is a public nuisance, which is, is, you know, like I said, a judicial order, a court order saying you can no longer do this on the property.
How do we stay out of the situation where somebody just doesn't like their neighbor? And so, you know, they're calling and saying they're a nuisance, they're calling and saying loud music or, you know, whatever.
Well, part of it has to be, in any of these kinds of cases, part of it has to be the officer's observation too. There has to be some objective proof. So it's, it's a little less complicated than a barking dog complaint, but those, you know, that's sort of the worst case scenario for officers and prosecutors. The neighbor complains about the other neighbor's dog barking all the time and then the officer shows up and the dog's perfectly behaved. I mean, my dog's the opposite, you know, they're great, then people show up, they're maniacs. But, but it's, it's similar, I mean, the officer will want to have some objective proof, his own, his or her own, what he hears, what he, what she sees, what, you know, some type of record or document, maybe it's videotape. And again, there's always going to be that one neighbor that, you know, leans over the fence, takes the phone and records the dog and the dog sees it and starts barking. I mean, that's an actual case that I, I had once. The dog was great until the neighbor stuck her phone over the fence and made the dog bark and then she had a dog bark a place. So there's always going to be that one neighbor that maybe does that, but, you know, the officer's going to have, still going to have to use his or her discretion, you know, in this, in this kind of situation.
All right. Well, if anybody knows dogs, I do.
There you go.
Counselor Wilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I go back to those four times that we were down at the House of Representatives listening to testimony from people talking about what was going on in their neighborhoods and situations that they've had to live with for the past few years. So this is pretty serious. I mean, we're talking about neighborhoods that have been disruptive, that people moved into a wonderful place thinking they were, this is where they wanted to be and all of a sudden, they can't be in their backyard, enjoying their backyard, or they can't have their children out in their front yard. So, so these are pretty severe and when I look at these charges, these service fees, I don't see them as being punitive enough. I mean, I, I know they're, $500 is a lot of money, however, if it's the second time you've been told that, that you're, that you are disrupting this neighborhood and you need to do something about it and you're a landowner and you haven't done enough about it that it didn't happen again, it seems to me, we're not talking about cost recovery here like we were earlier this afternoon, we're talking about punishment.
Well, we aren't though. We're talking about the cost of, of the second call, the third call, the fourth call. It really is the fee...
It's really not punitive.
The service fees aren't punitive, but, but the ordinance, enforcement of the ordinance can be. We can, in other words, we can go in addition to the service fee for these calls and the process that we would use to say, deal with the owner or the agent on a mitigation plan. There's time involved in that obviously with code enforcement, maybe law, police department, legal department, and making sure that this mitigation plan is going to work and that it's, and it's actually then put into, into action. But we can enforce, if this is adopted, this can also be enforced, if a violation of it can be enforced as a civil infraction or a criminal, a misdemeanor. So that's where you sort of get the punitive, either civil fine or, or criminal fine or maybe even sort of jail time, unlikely, but the punitive aspect comes in when we actually do an, take an enforcement action. So, and they aren't mutually exclusive. You could, we can go through this disruptive property notice and fee and mitigation plan, but if there's a failure on the part of the owner to deal with it, it's not, it doesn't prevent us from going in and enforcing it as a, as a violation of the city code.
It just seems like, I know we don't want to live in a very large homeowner's association, but at the same time, we want our, our citizens to feel protected and that, that they have their right to be in their backyard and enjoy their home.
And if you look at the end, sort of towards the end, it's a failure, you know, a violation of this particular code can result in a, a daily fine of not less than $100. So if it's an ongoing problem, that adds up pretty quick civilly. Now there's, now again, the burden of proof is on the government or the state to prove. In a civil case, it's more likely true than not, it's not beyond a reasonable doubt. So more often than not, these would get, these would get sort of prosecuted as a civil violation, a civil code violation rather than criminal, especially if the owner is an absentee landlord in California. It's a lot harder to get, you know, serve process on them or put out a warrant. So we would, we would find, we would serve them civilly in, say in California or wherever and then proceed with, with the civil enforcement action. So there is, there is a punitive aspect to it, which again, can be used as well, but this, like most code enforcement type codes, the idea is to really sort of get voluntary compliance. The service fee can act as sort of a hammer to get people to voluntarily comply and then actually take the action that they're, they're proposing to take and then the fee, that service fee can be waived. So there is a little bit of motivation there, but it's not intended to be a punishment or a penalty.
I guess I'd just like to go on record saying that I think we need to get a hold of this problem.
Counselor Wilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's go back to that burden of proof question. You said that if the city brings a nuisance suit, the city has the burden of proof, but under section 7-7-10, if a property owner appeals the designation of the property as a disruptive property, that statement says the property owner has the burden of proof.
Right. That's the designation itself as a, as a disruptive property. It's different than a nuisance. The nuisance is a, is a specific statute that allows us to go to superior court, this is municipal court, and, and get the judge to declare that the activity on the property is a nuisance and then grant an injunction or court order saying, you know, you got to cease that operation. In these cases, I'm not sure, you know, it would be, have to be pretty extreme for a judge to, to take that, take that action to, to actually find it a nuisance. I mean, where you more commonly find, you know, a nuisance in a property use is a gravel pit in the middle of a, or, you know, or a cement mixer in, in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I mean, that would be, that's fairly easy for a judge to find that's nuisance and issue a court order saying, stop. This, unless it's an ongoing problem, daily, day in, day out, where there's, you know, something going on, I think it'd be, it's not going to be easy. I mean, it's still that burden that we would have to, but again, it's, it's an option out there.
Well, it seems unusual to me to put the burden of proof on the property owner when they're appealing the designation.
That's the design, that's the designation.
Right.
I mean, again, it's sort of the, so when we have evidence that says, you know, as an administrative, as an administrative decision by the city that your property is deemed a disruptive property, you could, you know, if you're the property owner and you don't, you challenge, you can challenge that administrative designation, then you're sort of appealing that, that designation and showing why your property, it's sort of a show cause type hearing. Why is your property not a disruptive property based on this ordinance?
Shouldn't we be, we be more clear in the language to explain that it is a show cause or...
Well, I'm not sure it's called that. I'm not sure the city court would want to call it that. So I, I don't want to get into their purview of how they, they would classify it, but if we, if we simply say that the property owner has the burden of proof, effectively that's what it is. I don't think the city court has a show cause type hearing in there on their books. This is going to be new to them too, you know, because they're only...
Is this similar to what the city of Tempe has in its ordinance?
It's pretty identical.
Okay.
I mean, this, a lot of, most of this is, you know, we kind of customize it, we, you know, some of the fee issues and so, and, and we're a little bit more, they're, Tempe obviously has a much greater problem, I think, with the party houses and frat houses, those kinds of things. I mean, very frequently, a lot of them, we have, although we have some serious problems, I don't think it's quite as dramatic as Tempe from what I've been talking to them. I mean, they're, it's every weekend that they have problems and it's usually the same landlords over and over and over again. So this is a little bit, we could have made it a little bit more lenient in terms of timeframes and, and, you know, and the service fees are less and we don't charge a service fee for the first one, but for the most part, this is pretty similar to what city of Tempe does.
Do you know what their experience is in dealing with the appeals?
It's effective. They've told me it's effective. You know, different city, obviously, a lot bigger, a lot more going on, you know, 40,000 college students, you know, spread out, living in, you know, in and around the campus. So there's a lot more activity going on. So on any given Saturday night or Friday night during the school year, they don't have enough officers to, to deal with all of the complaints. That's what they tell me, it's sort of the bottom line. So if we have one or two houses on a particular weekend or a particular timeframe, I think we have the resources to go and respond to those in Tempe, they're probably not responding to half of them, or give or take. I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but they do what they can with the resources they have.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the Council? Any public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sue Brueger, 604 Cypress Drive, just a citizen, and I had a couple of questions about this proposed nuisance ordinance. I was wondering if the new ordinance would apply to properties with the SPC zoning or the multifamily high density zoning or single-family nine?
Mayor and Council, the, it applies to residential property, so residential buildings, mixed occupancy, so if it's a, if it's sort of a mixed use type project that has residential and commercial and office, it would apply to the, to the residential component. It does apply to multiple, multifamily, rooming houses, boarding houses, single families. So it applies to residential uses, not, it's not tied to zoning. So if there's a residential use in a commercial zone or a business zone and it, and even though it's technically a zone business, but it's, you know, adjacent to other residences, it applies to that, but it doesn't apply to like a bar or a restaurant because that's not a residential use.
I, I asked this question in reference to church camps that are in the southwestern part of our, our town. We have, we don't, we have had severe problems with noise coming from church camps that have this zoning, so I'm asking the question from that point of view. And over the past nine years, we've worked with the police department on this issue with Sergeant Ben Scott and Lieutenant Bonnie, and they have instructed us, when we make our calls, that we have to fill out a, have the officer fill out a police report and that we are to obtain a copy of the police report with a number on it. And so my second question is about the document summarizing the findings and observations of the officer investigating. Is that document to be a police report?
Well, Mayor and Council, that would be a, a public record. I, I guess you could call it a police report, but it would be generally available as a public record upon request. Obviously, you know, there are certain reasons why that may be withheld, if there's an ongoing investigation of some bigger scale, you know, that might be held back if it, if it interferes with the investigation. But generally speaking, police reports are public records that can be obtained by, by the public, it's, you know, going to the police department.
John, would, would a church camp count as a residential?
Not in, not in this definition. I mean, again, it's a, it has to be a residential use, residential building, you know, single-family, multiple, multifamily kind of thing. So it's not intended really to deal with that issue, at least how it's written.
Even if the zoning is a residential zoning, a multifamily zoning and a single-family zoning and there would be people, it would be, you know, similar to the group homes in that different people are coming and going at different times, different people are renting this property and it's being used as a business property.
Well, again, this, this, the way this ordinance is currently in, it sort of cuts across zoning. It doesn't, it, we don't want to get sort of into the technical issues of the, what's zoning and what's a residential and what's not, because as we talked about earlier, you can have single-family residential in business zoning or commercial zoning and, and there, and, and so we want to talk about the, because this isn't part of the zoning code, it's part of the, the other part of the city code. So it really deals with residential uses that are disruptive to the other residential uses around, not business uses or, or it's not, you know, as it's written, it's not intended to deal with camps or if you live in a, in a residence that's a block away from a bar. There are other ordinances that deal with those kinds of noise issues. This is really to deal with disruptive residential property, residential, disruptive residential uses.
So a church camp would be what type of zoning?
I, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
I, I can tell you. I know that Chapel Rock has the SPC zoning, which is the specialty, specially planned community, and then the United Christian has, it is zoned as multifamily high density and single-family nine, but both of them basically operate as businesses. One of them advertises at a national level. So I guess my question is then, what is the definition of residential property? Does it mean there's beds there and people sleep there or does it mean, you know, it's a privately owned property or, I guess I don't understand what the... a privately owned property, or, I guess I don't understand what the definition would be.
Again, we're, in this instance, you know, this, this ordinance is not intended to deal with that kind of issue. It's, it's to deal with disruptive residential, you know, houses or apartments, you know, multifamily or housing units or condos that are disruptive to the, the neighborhood, to the other residential uses in, in the area. Currently, as it's written, it's not intended to really deal with noise complaints from camps or from, you know, commercial activities or special events or churches or anything like that. It's, it's really to sort of deal with, if there's a residential use and the use on the property creates unreasonable disruption to the rest of the neighborhood by, you know, one of, one or more of these issues, you know, then it's, it's a tool for the police department of the city to be able to deal with that disruptive use on that resident, in that residence. But, you know, if it's a camp or a hotel or a motel, that's, even though people sleep there, it's not, that's not deemed, that's not a residential use under the, under this concept.
Okay.
Okay.
Not sure if I answered your question, but-
Well, it's just such a long, ongoing problem, and it isn't a once, a once in a, you know, it's every night that we deal with it. So, you know, that's why, so far we haven't had, even though we have been following, I, I've been working with people in five neighborhoods in the southwest part of town over this, and so far we've had very little help on it, and we, we could use some help from our city fathers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say I like your approach. It seems like it's comprehensive, enveloping, but also exclusionary. It does, it's not safety and health, it's not zoning, it sounds like it's pure legal. Now, the only question I have now for the legal, one, thank you, Ms. Councilman Ohr for your concern. My question is, well, I came here in October and I saw that the new police chief gave a very excellent presentation of rehabilitation homes throughout the United States, and he showed the top 10 cities. Nine of them are like Cleveland, Washington DC, very large multimillion occupant cities. And their HUD's shining example, I understood from that meeting, for a small city was Prescott. And they were looking for Prescott to go off and solve this problem, and I think, as I was following in the newspapers, it sounded like people were taking a zoning approach. I didn't think that would work, and it sounds like you've come up with a, a legal tool, a really good legal tool. My question is, when you start implementing the legal tool, do you, do you anticipate coming up against HUD in a, in a legal battle, or have you vetted this with HUD? Is HUD on board with you? That's, that's the impression I came out of, from the October meeting, and there were other meetings down with the House of Representatives, working groups. My, my understanding was HUD felt that Prescott was a shining example, and they are satisfied with your number of rehabilitation homes, they felt you were saturated, which means they're happy. But they did not like the fact that people were trying to close these homes down based on safety and health rewrites of the regulations, which I think Noel Campbell was doing. Now, I'd heard that, you know, the new approach was zoning, but the approach here sounds like it's disruptive homes. I think it's a perfect legal tool. But again, my question is for the legal people, do you expect to be going up against HUD, or are we just going to get slammed down again? Thank you.
Well, one thing I've learned in over 20 years of law practice, I never try and predict what the federal government's going to do. But I will say this, that this is a, this is a non-discriminatory, across-the-board application, whether it's six college students, whether it's my Christmas party, whether it's group homes-
Heard about your party.
Yeah, that's good. We've never had cops show up, well, other than to attend the party. But anyway, but anyway, no, so this is an across-the-board application, it, it doesn't discriminate, you know, to say, or to say that, that it will never be applied in discriminatory manner, well, that's certainly not what we're intending. We're not going to go out and sort of focus on particular uses like group homes. It's going to be applied on a case-by-case. Obviously, part of the training for the police department is going to be that this, you know, this applies whether, you know, whether it's college students, the single-family residents where the parents are away and they're having a big party, or whether it's a group home and there's too much noise or disruptive activity or illegal drug use. So it applies across the board, it's not, it doesn't pick and choose who would, who applies against, you know, so it's residential uses. So I don't, you know, to the extent if HUD came after us on sort of the facial challenge, I, I, I don't see how they would, you know, but then again, there's always that case-by-case application, and, but that would be something that we would certainly want to train our police department code enforcement, make sure they're clear, that, you know, this isn't, this isn't a tool to be using in a kind of, any kind of discriminatory manner, whether it's based on race or, or religion, or handicap, or anything.
Mr. Mayor, can I make the motion?
I'll take one more. Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Ralph Hess of Prescott. If you care to, would you please take a look at the proposed ordinance, page two, where you have the definition of disruptive activities? You have loud music, number one, excessive loud or unnecessary noises audible beyond the property line. Now, both of those conditions are covered in Prescott City Code 5.4, or 5-4. And I didn't make a copy of that particular code provision. And if Mr. Palladini has it handy, he might take a look at it. But I think it also assesses responsibility to the owner of the property, if I recall correctly, but I can't say for sure because I didn't make a copy of that. Under the definition, subpart number four, where it talks about altercations, and number five, illegal drugs, both of those are covered by Arizona revised statutes. Those are criminal offenses. So you either have maybe an assault charge or disturbing the peace, and all the drug offenses. So all of those are covered under the criminal statutes for the Arizona revised statutes. So, and I, based on what I've heard today, I, it sounds like the goal of this ordinance is to take whatever liability or responsibility that the occupants of these residents have and vicariously apply it to the owner, with what I see as a complete lacking of due process. Going back to the issue of due process, well, actually, I wrote down due process that Steve and, I'm sorry, Councilman Shishka and Councilwoman Wilcox raised with regard to the burden of proof. Now, I haven't done the research on this, but if you're going to assess a service fee to the owner of the property and then put the burden on, the burden of proof on the property owner to prove a negative, that he does not or she does not own a disruptive home in order to avoid having to pay, which I don't think is a nominal fee. It's a significant fee, so you're depriving this owner of property and then telling him or her that while the appeal is pending, on which the property owner has the burden of proof for proving, "I'm not a disruptive property," I'll ask all of you to try to fathom being put in a position where you have to prove you're, something you're not. It's, there's a reason we have due process requirements, and when the government wants to take government action against you, the government has the burden of proof to show that you're committed something for which you're going to be penalized. So that's an issue for me. Those are the specifics that I wanted to address with regard to the, to the ordinance. The other kind of an overall aspect to it, a couple of things. One is, even though it's in the recitals, it refers in the recitals that the purpose is to address chronic lawful or disruptive activity. It says that twice in the first recital and the second recital. And then what's described as a disruptive, a disruptive property are isolated events that occur over a period of six, two in 60 days, three over 120 days, four over 180 days, five over 360 days. That doesn't sound like chronic to me. That sounds like intermittent problems. And if I looked at the natural definition of chronic, that would not appear to be chronic activity. Going back to the definition of disruptive activities, number two, boisterous gatherings. This goes back again to a, or I want to make a comment following up on what Councilman Shishka said, and what Mr. Palladini said. I don't expect that, first of all, it sounds like your Christmas party might involve boisterous gathering. And if any of you have volleyball parties during the summer, I suspect that's going to qualify as boisterous gatherings. Now, with regard to, this is a question that was asked by Councilman Shishka, is what happens if you have a neighbor who just doesn't like you? Well, I suspect that there's never going to be a notice that goes to Mr. Palladini about his boisterous Christmas activities, okay? And I suspect that any of you, if you have more than one boisterous gathering of volleyball players at your house, you're not going to get any notice either, even if the neighbors say, "Hey, I don't like all that noise over there, like, like we heard about the church." But what I'm concerned about is, the folks that have been in here the last few months who really don't want recovery homes in their neighborhoods can very well just sit out there at the sidewalk and say, "You know, there's boisterous gathering over there. There's a boisterous gathering over there. There's a boisterous gathering over there." And even if the intent on the face is not to have any type of selective application of this, there's going to be people who I suspect, based on what I've heard in the last few months, who are going to be making these complaints because of boisterous gatherings, loud music, and all of these activities, which are covered by other code provisions and other statutes, with the exception of extending it to the owner. So what you want to do is extend liability to the owner for conduct of his, his or her tenants. And I, I have serious concerns about the, as I said, the due process protections that appear to be lacking in this ordinance. So I think that covers it.
Thank you. We'll take one last comment.
This is five minutes. Right here, five minutes. Hi, Mayor, council members. Thank you very much today for showing backbone earlier this afternoon. You've distinguished yourselves from other councils in the past. And since I've lived here, I've been to every meeting, so I know what I'm talking about. Councilwoman Ohr, you were magnificent today. You have a lot of support. You passed this ordinance. You're going to make thousands of people happy. I've read this thing about eight times. It's a good start. Might want to amend it here and there. I agree with the councilwoman, though, that fines should be 1,000, 5,000, and 10,000. Let's hurt them. They've done a lot of hurt to our community, let's give it, it's time to give it back to them. It's not time to stumble or hesitate. The people that own or lease these rehab homes do so with anonymity and have done so for a long time. We don't know who they are. These are the cockroaches that destroy everything. I suspect a lot of them are attorneys, myself. They read the tickets in the morning, find out who got arrested, they make their phone calls, set it up, talk, phone call to the judge, it's all prearranged, "I'll keep you out of court, you won't even have to go to criminal court. We can get you before the prosecutor work out a deal, you'll be in Prescott next week, you're in good shape." This is why the rehab percentage is so low. It's not to rehab, it's to stay out of prison. That's the truth. It's a money machine. I can't wait till we can find out names of the people who own or lease these properties, so I can put a face on it, put a website up, and let all the people in this city know. These are the people that have been hurting your city for decades, working the system, and the attorneys are so darned good at it. I mean, they created it. This is perfect for them. This is a money machine. This is an ATM for them, at our expense. Police calls, fire calls, it's all on our back, they don't have to pay a dime. But they should. Need to get serious and go after them. Let's, let's make this the year that Prescott got courage, stood up, took charge, and made it happen. So we're off to a great start. This, this ordinance is fabulous. I love it. I hope you pass it. I don't see 100 people here saying, "Don't." No opposition, no opposition to this. So I'm urging you, please, pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take one last one. We've got to make it quick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I want to appreciate you for taking the time to review that ordinance, but absolutely not for any of those reasons I just heard, because that was so full of hate, I'm embarrassed. The whole purpose of this legislation has been protect both the citizens of this city and also to protect the clients in these homes. And I'm hoping the ordinance does that as well. And it's, I can't, I have complaints about glass pipes from cars, and this ordinance is not to signal out people on these residents. So I hope that message does not get across. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One last thing I'll say is that we have conformed to other cities in establishing this, and they have used this quite often in trying to deal with nuisance and disruptive properties in their city. And I think it's a good start. I think it's something that I know I will be very, very much in favor of, and, do I have a motion right now?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to Councilwoman Ohr for to make the motion.
I'd like to move to adopt ordinance number 4967-1505.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second? Please vote.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you all for coming. Like I normally do in the past, I'd like to take just a moment and, and read one of our founding fathers' comments. And obviously, you know, we have votes coming up for President and other public figures. We also have ordinances coming up, resolutions, initiatives, and everything. And, you know, we have to realize that democracy is very fragile. And hope you go, get out and, you know, look very closely at, at the way you vote and who you vote for. And John Adams says, "Remember, democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself." There never was a democracy yet that did not commit suicide. Thank you.
Yeah.
Amen.